This is Councilmember Scott Bader, Council President Stonecifer is having trouble logging in. And so I'm going to start us off this afternoon and hopefully she'll be with us here in just a minute. Good afternoon, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of October 27th, 2021. In accordance with the governor's healthy Washington guidelines and in an effort to protect city employees and members of the public from transmission of COVID-19, the city council is conducting our weekly council meeting remotely. We are prepared to reopen the council chambers to public meetings when public health considerations indicate it is safe to do so. There are several ways in which you can engage with the council and participate in our meetings. To watch participate in our remote meetings, you may watch council meetings live on Comcast Channel 21 or Frontier Channel 29. You may watch live online at www.everettwa.gov/citycouncil, where you may also watch past meetings. You may also call in to listen to the live meeting at any point by dialing 1-425-616-3920, conference ID 724-887-726 pound. You may find the public comment registration form on the city of Everett website under the city council department. Once you go to register here to provide comment via Zoom, you will need to fill the form out completely if you wish to provide public comment at a future meeting. After the public comment form is submitted, you will receive an email confirmation with a Zoom link and the phone number to the meeting. Participants must submit this form at least 30 minutes prior to meeting. Forms submitted after that time will not receive the Zoom link number to speak, but may still participate the day of the meeting by submitting comments and writing to council@everettwa.gov. For assistance, please contact the council office at 425-257-8703 or email debwilliams@everettwa.gov. Please note that we do not allow comments of any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Outside of our meetings, members of the public are always welcome to contact council members, provide comments or concerns on any matter via email at council@everettwa.gov or by calling the city council office at 425-257-8703. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel? Councilmember Moore?
He's excused.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. Thank you, Councilmember Bader, for pinch hitting while I have some computer problems here. We are. I would now like to call on Councilmember Roberts to please read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, President Stonecifer. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahoch people and their successors, the Taleb tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the lands and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. And now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we will move on to mayor's comments. Good afternoon, Mayor Franklin.
Good afternoon, Council. And President Stonecifer and the rest of the council and our community. Just a couple of comments today. You may have noticed we have a new voice calling role today. I want to take an opportunity to introduce Ashley Scott, who recently joined our city team and is our new deputy city clerk, and today is her first council meeting. So, welcome, Ashley. I also wanted to mention item number six, which is on the consent agenda. It's a request for your approval to apply for a Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission grant. It's going to help Everett Police Department recruit a more diverse workforce. And I think as you all know, this has been a priority of ours for a long time, our entire workforce, but especially our police force. The police department has already had some success in recruiting more diverse candidates. New hires in 2021, forty-five and a half percent of those new hires were officers of color. And in 2021, thirty-six point four percent of our new hires were women, which is great. We'd like to see those numbers increase. Overall, seventeen percent of our Everett Police Department workforces are people of color and about ten percent are women. And so again, we're trying to increase those numbers. So this grant would really help us with that effort. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention since it's on the consent. Thank you. No further comments today.
Thank you, and we will. Go, did I, I missed the approval of the minutes, didn't I?
Council President Stonecifer, I think I'm up in the order first.
Yes.
And then Councilmember Vogel, Murphy, Tui, Bader, and yourself.
Yes, but somehow I missed the approval of the minutes. We have minutes for, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting?
Murphy moves approval.
Robert's second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
And President Stonecifer?
Yes. Now on to council comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
Thanks, President Stonecifer. I just have three quick items. First, I attended last week the Northwest Neighborhood Association. And Kimberly Shelton gave a presentation on parks and tree management and so on. And there have been some questions that have come from that, and I have communicated with Laurie and Edmund so we can get those answered. But good, she did a great job there. Secondly, and I want to welcome Ashley Scott. I actually was with the city of Arlington and had been helping with Snohomish County cities. And so I reached out to her to help provide a notice to all Snohomish County cities only to find that she's now with the city of Everett. So that was the great news and welcome. And there is an Association of Washington Cities Climate Resilience and Risk Management Forum on November 10. And that has been provided to you all. And then lastly, I attended the Snohomish County Citizens for Improved Transportation meeting yesterday and heard a great presentation from Community Transit on just the different work they're doing to integrate the systems with North Gate and Sound Transit and then planning for that same kind of integration as that's as the Sound Transit system moves north 2024 connecting with Lynwood. They also did talk about something called flexible microtransit, which they're going to be doing some work with really kind of pilot, it appeared pilot work on such kinds of transit in the city of Lynwood. And I know Tom Hingson was in attendance at the meeting as well. And I thought this would be something that would be worth and perhaps of interest to Everett as we move forward. So just wanted to call that out for my colleagues, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vogel.
Thank you very much. Um, I was at the TAC meeting, so Transportation Advisory Committee. And I believe the, if, so Paul just mentioned microtransit, and I think that's like the getting you from your place of residence to that first mile, you know, getting you on to a bus. And we actually talked about that and it being a possibility here with Everett Transit. So they are looking into that. So thank you for bringing that up. And we also got to hear about the California Bicycle Improvement Area. And it's called something else now, and I've lost that piece of paper. But state Evratonians, you will be getting all sorts of information and asked to participate in how we should improve that area. So that's very exciting. And I would also suggest that you check out boards and commissions and see if you can join the TAC if you are interested in transportation, et cetera. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Oh, that's right. He's not here today. Councilmember Murphy.
Council President, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to make a few comments in the area of public safety and in particular having to do with our police department. As you know, I'm the liaison to the police department and have been working all year with Chief Templeman. And of course, one of the biggest concerns we have in our police department is our staffing issues. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, this has been an ongoing challenge for several years in terms of staffing. It seems like we, you know, we quite often take two steps forward in terms of recruiting and staffing, and then we end up taking three steps back because folks either retire or resign to move on. So I have been working with the chief over the past several weeks and have had a number of discussions with Chief Templeman as well as with Deputy Mayor Nick Harper. And I would like to outline a series of bold moves. I think there's five moves we can make within the recruiting area. And then there are a number of moves that we can make from a retention standpoint. Because of the, of course, this problem is twofold. It's getting the recruits in the door. And then it is hanging on to the employees and police officers that we have hired. So, you know, we talk a lot about our pride with Naval Station Everett. And one of the, one of the sayings that we have around town is that Naval Station Everett is the sailor's choice. And quite often it is a place where active duty naval folks want to end up getting transferred to. And in many cases, end up retiring from active duty service. And one of my, one of my thoughts is, is that we need to try to make the city of Everett Police Department the cops' choice in terms of where police officers want to go. And in many cases, want to remain for their entire career and retire from the Everett Police Department. So let me just briefly talk about a few of the ideas that I've been discussing with Chief Templeman and with Deputy Mayor Nick Harper. And I'll be, at the end of this, I'm going to be asking for a motion from hopefully one of my colleagues in support of working with staff, the chief, Nick Harper, and of course, the mayor, who I've also spoken to on this topic to further refine these proposals. But first, in the area of recruiting, I believe there are five important steps that we should be taking. First, we need to look at increasing our lateral hiring bonus program so that Everett stands out from many of the other neighboring police departments. As many of you know, we were a leader in this several years ago. And soon after, we implemented our lateral hiring bonus program. Many other local departments stepped up and met what we were doing. So I believe that it would be warranted that we take another look at this lateral bonus program. Second, one of the areas where we could make some real progress is there are a number of police officers that have been through the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, which takes as much as six months to get through. But they don't have two years of active duty police experience. And so adding a hiring incentive or a lateral hiring incentive for a basic law enforcement academy graduate who has less than two years of experience would be a benefit to us to be able to hire some people and hit the ground running. So that's the second strategy. The third strategy would be to add an additional incentive for police officers that are hired in laterals from both out of state and in-state with greater than five years' experience. I think we all know that that level of experience allows those officers to hit the ground running and be effective. And so having a, an additional incentive layered on top of the normal lateral hiring bonus for out of state and in-state lateral hires would be an additional incentive. The fourth thing that we could do in talking with the chief is that many of the other departments that are looking to hire laterals are now preloading vacation and sick leave time onto the new hire book so that somebody coming in with X number of years' experience from another law enforcement agency, they don't, they don't come into the city of Everett with zero accrued PTO or sick leave or vacation. So I think we should talk about whether or not preloading at some level vacation and sick leave would be a very attractive thing for hiring. The fifth bold move I think we could make would be to really dramatically increase the staffing focus on recruitment and in particular, background investigation work. That tends to be one of the big bottlenecks that the police department runs into is all the background work that has to be done. And I know the chief has plans in place to dramatically increase the amount of staff time getting focused on background investigations. But formalizing that and acknowledging that challenge, I think, is important. So for all of those five bold moves, I think will make a dramatic impact and really help us move the needle in terms of hiring more police officers. And that coupled with what the mayor talked about earlier with this $60,000 diversity recruiting grant will allow us to do some additional marketing efforts, advertising, cover application fees for underrepresented applicants, and end up having some training for our own recruitment activities. So I really think that that is a, is a great activity. And I hope that, I hope that we'll all support that when it comes forward on the consent agenda. So the second part of these bold moves would be in the area of retention. We have some great police officers. I think we're all very proud of our police department. Chief Templeman and the entire team have done a great job of being very forward thinking in many areas of policing. So recognizing that, that we have that skill and talent on board and not spending all of our time and effort trying to recruit police officers into the department only to have them leave or go to other departments or retire. So the idea there would be, we could do a one-time retention bonus. This would be payable at the end of 2022. And it would essentially reward our existing officers with a one-time stay bonus if they stay through the end of 2022. And the details of that would be worked out, but this would be based on some percentage of their base pay. There's a couple of other smaller things that we could do. One of the things that means a lot to our police is that they, in many cases, have requested that we upgrade our on-duty uniforms to be a jumpsuit format, which is more durable and comfortable for our police officers. So I think we should look at whether we could upgrade the police officer on-duty uniforms to a jumpsuit that would be attractive and durable and comfortable for our police officers. And then finally, within the area of retention, many of our police officers like to wear these, these vests that you'll quite often see them, and they have equipment that locks into the vest. And that's something that in the past has been something that the employees themselves had to buy and pay for. And I think in talking with the chief, that is something that if the city of Everett was to step up and actually make that a part of the standard issue gear that the city would provide to our police officers, that would be another thing that would be attractive to our active duty police officers and help with retention. So there's a series of things we can do in recruiting and in retention. There's details to be worked out. Of course, there are cost implications. I believe that there are at least two different buckets of money that we might consider using for these activities. First, we've been understaffed, so there's likely to be some carryforward dollars in the 2021 budget for police that we could utilize. And second, we'll hear more, I know, later and over the next several weeks about the American Recovery Plan Act dollars, the $20 million that the city is receiving. And I believe it's allowable that some of these activities, we could use some of those ARP dollars, those federal grant dollars to cover some of these costs. So, so I'm really excited for us to make a bold move in these areas to try to once and for all solve some of these police shortages that we have. And the concern is, you know, the chief and the team have done a great job of covering the city with, with being down. Right now, I think we're down fifteen officers. The concern is that if we end up with another five or 10 or 15 officers that leave before we get this problem solved, we could really end up in a critical state from a public safety standpoint around our city. And I don't think any of us probably want to see what that looks like. So at this point, I would like to move forward with working with the mayor and Nick Harper and the police chief to formalize some of these recommendations, put budget dollars together with them and bring it back to the council over the next several weeks as we go into our budget process. These things are not currently in our 2022 proposed budget, but I think there's an opportunity to add these activities and really make a big difference. And really try to get our, our police department well-staffed over the next several months. But at this point, I would very much appreciate if there's any of my colleagues that would be willing to second allowing me to work with the chief and the administration on formalizing these proposals. I'd sure appreciate a second.
Councilmember Tui, I would second that. I, being in a business downtown every day, we, we've had some real challenges in the last couple of months. So we really have the need for more presence downtown, especially on certain days. And maybe even had to hire extra staffing and security to handle just being open nor, normal hours. So definitely if we can to look at how we can get back up to full steam, I think that would be great. I would just be, I know in the past, Chief Templeman has provided what other jurisdictions do on incentives. And I know we've been kind of in the middle of what everybody else does. So as we look at increasing ours, I'd be curious to know whether we're still in the middle there or, you know, just how far we need to go to be competitive with other jurisdictions. Because I know that this is a common problem throughout many cities that, you know, folks are having a hard time filling these positions. So thank you for that work.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your support. And I'll work with the chief to make sure that we bring back some of that information as we formalize these things. The last thing I wanted to just briefly state to do with the police department is, and look, I recognize that our, our first priority has to be filling the open positions that we have and working on retention of our existing police officers. But secondly, and we'll be starting to talk about our 2022 budget over the next few weeks, I believe the 10th of November is our first formal budget presentation. And currently, as it sits, our, our 2022 budget does not have any, I don't believe it has any additional adds to staff in our police department. We all remember that in 2020, we were able to obtain the COPS grant, which allowed us some funding subsidy from the federal government over the next several years. And I would like to, as we get to that time in our budget discussions, talking about police, I would like to talk about at least starting to make some modest increases in our police department staffing moving forward to reflect the growth in our community and the needs throughout the community in terms of public safety. So I'll be, I'll be bringing that up as we get to November 10th and talking further about our budget. And Council President, I apologize for the length of my comments, but that's it for me today. Thank you very much.
You, and I'll just add that I think this is all great conversation and total report thinking about how we can enhance public safety in our community. One of the, some of the issues that have been raised, I think, I'd be curious to hear from administration about some of the negotiations. I like the uniforms, for example. I'm assuming that's a union negotiation point. And whether that has come back, has come up in the past as part of union, the contract negotiations. So some of those things may come back. I am very interested in hearing too about the staffing pipeline. I think you bring up some great points about, you know, how we could provide an incentive program to keep people that we have. But the, and that's been an issue. I think the, another issue is the pipeline. And it might be helpful if administration could bring us some information as you're working with them about, you know, what, I mean, I think we have projections of how many people we think will be leaving based on our experience or where they are in terms of nearing retirement, how long it's going to take to get people on board. I'd love to see some scenarios. Because the one thing that I want to make sure we avoid doing in the budget, if possible, is putting new staff positions in the budget that actually we know cannot be fulfilled. Because this is, has been, you know, a practice in the past that has really caused us to have different actions of budgeted funds that really didn't ever materialize. Both it's a disappointment to the community if we actually can't fulfill that promise. I want to make sure that we're putting positions in there that we really think that we have a good chance of filling. And then also, it keeps us from allocating funds to other priorities in the, in the budget. Because it's, you know, being held for what in the past has been longstanding vacant positions that just don't get filled. So there's a lot to unpack here, and I really like the idea of taking a more holistic look at this. So I appreciate you bringing it forward, Councilmember Murphy. And we'll have you and Councilmember Tui and whoever else would like to join in the process, work with administration and bring back some information for us, particularly as we're looking at both the budget and also the ARPA funds, because those are obvious uses, funding sources for some of this work. With that, we'll move on next to Councilmember Tui for your comments.
I don't have any other comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bader.
Thank you, Council President Stonecifer. Just one item. I, for years now, I've heard from my neighbors about challenges around a certain motel on North Broadway and continue to hear about that. So I just wanted to circle back and ask if administration can get back to us on a motion request that Councilwoman Murphy and I made several weeks ago about amending the no sit, no lie ordinance to allow for other discrete areas for that to be applied. So would request a status update on that for us. Thanks.
Thank you, and we'll work with administration on that. I don't have any other additional comments. And I think we do today have our administrative update on the ARPA funds. So I think, I don't know who's going to give us the information, but I believe we're, we had, we're expecting to hear kind of what the status of the funding sources are and so forth.
That's me, Council President Stonecifer. And I have a very brief, just five-slide PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen now. Is that shown for you all?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, good afternoon, council members. As you're aware, in March of this year, US Congress did pass the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, which has delivered 350 billion in emergency funding to eligible state, local, and tribal governments to be used for COVID-19 relief and economic recovery. The city of Everett's allocation will be 20.7 million of those dollars. We received about $10,350,000 of our total allocation in May of this year. And we expect to receive the second half of our allocation in May of 2022. These ARPA funds represent a one-time opportunity to invest federal dollars towards our most pressing community challenges and recovery efforts that we otherwise wouldn't have funds to support. These funds must be spent within the established guidelines given by the US Department of Treasury and are separate from our city's typical annual budget process. To be eligible for ARPA funding, projects must align with one of the following categories. Those are support the public health response to COVID-19, address the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, premium pay for essential workers, replacing lost public sector revenue, and finally, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Over the past few months, as you can imagine, our finance team, the mayor and staff have participated in a number of seminars and other trainings to understand the purpose, intent, and permissible uses of these funds. It's clear that the goal of these directly allocated It's clear that the goal of these directly allocated dollars is not simply to fill one-time operational budget holes for the kicking that can down the road, but really to invest in strategic transformational initiatives that can set communities on a better trajectory for success in combating the challenges that COVID nineteen has exacerbated. And I think it's important when we all have the opportunity to thank our congressional delegation, Congressman Larson and Senators Murray and Cantwell for all the work they did to ensure that these allocations occurred. We've been very deliberative to ensure that the ideas we're exploring are, to the extent possible, complimentary to investments being made by Snohomish County as well as cities and towns throughout the county to stretch our collective allocations as far as possible to achieve the greatest impact. Today, I'll list several areas where staff are exploring initiatives for council's consideration. They're in no particular order, but they are, uh, all in direct response to public health and safety concerns, economic recovery and infrastructure needs, all of which have been taxed by this pandemic. We'll then follow up with you in the coming weeks with additional details prior to your workshop scheduled for November seventeenth, when we look forward to receiving feedback and some initial prioritization from each of you. We've also published a link to a survey so that members of our community can weigh in on their priorities as well to help inform your decision-making process as our council. Again, these are in no particular order, um, but expanding availability for low, no-cost childcare and early learning services, especially for underrepresented communities. Getting our community back to work is a critical component of our recovery. Lack of available affordable childcare is one of the biggest hurdles for many to return to the workforce. The city as well as Snohomish County can and must play a role in addressing these gaps in service. Throughout the pandemic, the county has been utilizing resources it received to do just that, and this direct allocation of ARPA dollars does give us an opportunity to join in that effort. Along the same lines, creating workforce development opportunities. In addition to childcare, we have an opportunity to support enhanced training for displaced workers by the pandemic. A relatively small investment of these ARPA funds could help Everett become a center of excellence for training our businesses and workforce as well as expand the options for high school STEM education. Supporting local business and community organizations most impacted by the pandemic. This would be a continuation of our Everett Forward Grants, gotten dollars directly into the hands of our small business owners and establish and strengthen business connections and support in South Everett in particular. Another related issue, alleviating chronic homelessness. This is one of the biggest challenges facing our business community and our residents, not to mention those individuals experiencing homelessness at this time. ARPA funds can address the significant increase of individuals living unsheltered in Everett. The twenty twenty point in time count identified three hundred individuals living unsheltered in Everett. However, between April of twenty twenty-one and today, COET has been in contact and tracked over seven hundred and fourteen individuals who are living unsheltered in our city. That's over a doubling in such a short period of time. Increasing the number of shelter options, a bridge between living on the street and being in permanent supportive housing is a continued need for our city and our county. In addition, following COVID, we need new non-congregate shelter options that are safe for both those experiencing homelessness currently as well as the providers. The county intends to make a significant commitment with its resources received, and our investment will be complimentary to those efforts. We also suggest considering, uh, expansion of mental health, behavioral health and addiction, addiction treatment services. Many outreach providers, including our COET team, connect with individuals on our streets who are experiencing severe mental health challenges, but it can take weeks to help them access mental assessments and specialized treatment and supportive housing are even less available for this challenging population. And finally, the development and implementation of homeless prevention strategies with a clear focus on youth and students experiencing homelessness. Increase, increasing real estate investment. With your recently adopted Housing Action Plan, it was clear from both staff and council as well as the mayor that increasing homeownership opportunities is an important part of our community's growth. The team is developing ideas of ways we can increase access to homeownership opportunities, in particular for communities of color and other underrepresented individuals, as well as looking to start a commercial real estate wealth building initiative. Mitigating the spread of COVID nineteen. After five waves of this virus, I think we can all agree that mitigating its spread is critical to our recovery. In addition to encouraging vaccination, this could involve increasing access to public restrooms to promote good hygiene as well as grants to clean up city streets and parks, reducing the spread of the disease and also to reduce the consequences of the increased street level social issues we are experiencing. As Councilmember Murphy noted, we support improve, improve, improvements to law enforcement recruitment and retention. Increase, increasing incentives for lateral hires, the consideration of a one-time retention bonus to encourage our officers to stay with the Everett Police Department and other tools uh, we enthusiastically support. As Councilmember Murphy mentioned, we have an incredible department with strong leadership, which we should invest in in order to maintain. We should be where police want to live and serve. Spurring economic activity by improving city-owned amenities and programming. Capital improvements. Over the years, the city invested in many real property assets that have fallen into disrepair. With ARPA funding, we believe that we can selectively repurpose some city buildings to help us recover from the pandemic. Also, when possible, making some of those assets profit generating could have a positive outcomes towards addressing our structural deficit in years to come. Improving efficiencies of city service. Technology upgrades are long overdue here in Everett to streamline city permitting and planning services, which will reduce the cost to develop and do business in Everett. Another area where we see opportunity is around climate change, not only for the public health and safety benefits, but also because of the disparate and unequitable impacts it has on people in poverty. Improving outdoor spaces for healthier living environments and strengthening climate resiliency through stormwater improvements. Stormwater parks are an example of a facility that treats stormwater and provides recreational opportunities. They're designed to provide regional stormwater control and habitat protection. These parks also support park and recreation access needs in underserved neighborhoods. And improving our urban forests is another way we can promote healthier living environments and outdoor recreation to help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen. These programs and services would be designed to build stronger neighborhoods and communities and to address health disparities and social inequities that are a consequence of climate change. To date, council-supported staff moving forward with approximately one million dollars in Everett Forward Grants. This was a follow-up to our Everett Cares Grant Program in twenty twenty. Resolution memorializing that support is scheduled for action this afternoon. So those dollars can begin to flow into our community immediately. Council also has approved the acquisition of forty additional pallet shelters, which occurred on September first of this year. I know that was a lot of information in a short period of time. It also represents a list of ideas that if implemented would exceed our total ARPA allocation. The goal here is for us to work together to help council make the best decisions moving forward and, and create a prioritization of, of these ideas that staff has explored, uh, in the coming day, weeks and months. I'd be happy to take questions now, um, but as I stated at the beginning of my update, we will follow up in the coming weeks with additional details prior to your workshop scheduled for November seventeenth. So you may begin to identify how you would prioritize these initiatives. We have been exploring for your consideration. In the meantime, I look forward to continued dialogue with each of you, and thank you for, uh, uh, what was another long update this afternoon. Appreciate it. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, and so we will look forward to getting more information. I'm not gonna take questions from council members at this point. Um, council members, if you have questions about this, you can reach out to, uh, uh, Mr. Harper on your own. Um, otherwise, we will plan on having a full briefing on the seventeenth of November. Uh, let's move on to city attorney comments. Hall, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, Council President. I don't have anything to report today. We are requesting a ten-minute executive session to discuss a legal matter pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one I three with no announcement to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, have we received any comments from the community for public comment?
Good afternoon, President Stonecifer. We have one written comment received from Deborah Pepinson. I know I pronounced her last name incorrectly. I have provided those to the clerk, the council and to administration and to the city attorney as part of the permanent record. We have no one wishing to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the eight consent items?
Roberts moves adoption of the consent agenda.
Wait a second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. We will move on to our action agenda. Uh, first item is item nine, Council Bill two-one-one-zero dash three-seven, third and final reading. Adopt the proposed ordinance approving the appropriations of the twenty twenty-one revised City of Everett budget and amending ordinance number three-eight-two-five dash two-one. Do I hear a motion?
Murphy moves approval.
Wait a second.
A second. Motion a second. We'll go down the rolls, see if we have any questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Roberts.
Do not have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vogli.
I think I do. And, um, I have to bring it up. It's the budget amendment, yes.
Yes.
Um, and so therefore, things have all closed down since. Do, 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 do. Thank you for waiting. My question is about. It's about the motel. Um, and who is behind the eighty-six thousand, unless that's the other one? And why isn't it coming up here? Suzie? I'm looking for the yellow sheet. Here it is. NGA twelve criminal justice motel shelter program. Have we talked about this much? And I just missed it?
Yes, this was, um, part of the briefing, uh, on the first reading of the ordinance, and this is a, a multi- motel shelter voucher program. Uh, we are receiving money from Snohomish County to fund this, and it's eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, and it will be administered in the city by our COET team.
So it's, it's a voucher program. It's not like, uh, okay, I was thinking that it was something else, and so that's probably where my question came from. Thank you for clarifying. I very much appreciate it. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Oops, Councilmember Murphy.
Uh, thank you. No, my questions were all answered during the briefing a few weeks ago. Thanks.
Councilmember Tui?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Bader?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
And I have no questions or comments. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Item ten. Adopt the resolution regarding the Everett Forward Grant Program. Do I hear a motion?
Roberts moves approval.
Murphy, second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's see if we have any questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Roberts.
I, I, I don't have any questions at this time, though I appreciated the presentation and, uh, helping us understand the context in which this fits. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Vogli?
Essentially the same as Councilmember Roberts, so I look forward to hearing from everybody, uh, including, you know, the residents on what they think is important.
Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, no, I just appreciate all the hard work on the staff. I know, uh, they worked hard to get these grants in and evaluate, and, uh, I know that there is a requirement in here that, uh, that the council would approve any of the grants that would either individually or collectively exceed fifty thousand dollars to any one organization and, uh, would just, uh, look forward, and I'm sure we'll get it at some point, just a list of all of the grants. Not only the ones that the council has to approve, but any that might be approved by the mayor and the staff that, that would be a part of this, this funding pool, so. Uh, just would request we get that list at some point, but thanks, thanks very much to all the staff for the good work.
Councilmember, uh, Tui?
Uh, yeah, I just want to state that I will recuse myself from voting on this as, uh, the organization that I work for, the Shack Art Center, has applied for, uh, did, um, submit a grant for this, so, um, to not, uh, to make sure there's no conflict of interest, um, I will accuse myself. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Bader?
I just would echo my fellow councilmembers' comments and appreciate all the hard work on this. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, and I, um, had an opportunity to look through the materials, uh, that we're providing uh, for this program, which I think it looks great. I'm glad to see that we're getting, um, the information out there. I'm only just a little concerned. I know that the funding source allows for the mayor to, um, uh, give grants of up to fifty thousand without, uh, council review, but I would like to have requests that we receive copies of the grant um, uh, submittal so that we can at least see who applied and received funding under that. Um, and then one of the, one of the, uh, concerns or questions I have has to do with, um, other funding sources. I noticed that the um, grant application asks for the project budget, but, uh, it doesn't specifically request, uh, to find out what other funding sources have been received for that project and um, in my day job, I work with a lot of organizations that have availed themselves of many, many funding, um, pipelines that have been made available because of COVID, both at the federal state and of course, like us at the local level. And, um, it's been my observation that, uh, some organizations have done very well uh, on some of these funding sources and, um, not to say that they, you know, didn't need funding, but they have, um, it's turned out to be a very favorable financial, uh, impact on their organization. And I'm just curious, um, to know how are we ensuring the, that the organizations that we're providing funding to, um, have shown us that they have a need for the funding, so, um, not just that they're doing a project and have a project budget, but that they don't have other funds available to them from any resource that would, uh, that would make our funding kind of, you know, double funding or superfluous to, to the overall program. So whoever's administering this grant, if you can help me understand how we're checking and verifying that need.
Uh, this is Dan Ernesti. I'm the Economic Development Director and overseeing the Everett Forward Grant Program. Um, a pretty good, um, question to try to tackle, a pretty big question, I guess, to try to tackle. Um, we have asked for budget, we have asked for matching funds, as you stated, and then in the contract itself, there's quite a bit of identification of what other funding sources the group has received as well as, uh, documentation of their COVID impact. Um, you expressed, um, need, and I'm, need is one of those somewhat subjective words that you know, probably ranges from this money will help us turn on the lights tomorrow to, you know, we suffered a pretty big, uh, loss during COVID, and this is helping us recover to more of a profitable setting. Um, the first business might call the second one not needing the, the, uh, grant as much, so. the, the uh grant as much. So we're trying to just thread the needle on that of, of ensuring as the the Everett Forward Grant, I mean, I'm sorry, the ARPA funds require that there was actually a COVID uh economic impact on these or that they are addressing a group like, let's say childcare. Um, that was as a, as an industry or as a uh service provided um was uh hurt really badly during COVID. So we will certainly, as a couple of council members said, also provide you a list. Um, we are trying to make sure that the vetting is done before we distribute that list broadly.
Sure.
Make sure that in, like, like you said, these are really ones that have experienced the COVID impact that they stated.
Okay, great. Um, and so can you tell at this point, um, obviously the, the, the timeline closed. Do you have more requests than the funding that we have identified for this program?
Well, we had uh about three and a half million dollars of requests and as, as we stated, there were, we are looking at about one point two million dollars of of uh applications that, that uh we've initially said yes to. So there might be uh in our, our experience with the three rounds of cares grant funding, we did see some attrition uh through the process that we think that will bring that number down to a million dollars. Uh, during the process as we vet um and qualify the eligibility of all the applicants. So right now, I, I, I think I'm answering that question that if we were to go out for round two, if we were, had, you know, another million dollars, we certainly would have applications to uh, to fund that we believe are eligible, but at this time, one million dollars is, is what we're working with.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Um uh clerk, will you please take the role on this?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
President Stone Cypher?
Yes. Now we'll move on to the council briefing agenda. These items come before the city council, serving as a council committee as a whole and are likely to be scheduled at a future meeting. Um, I'm gonna read both of these items and then I think we're gonna have a presentation uh from the Finance Director, Suzy Haugen. So item eleven is Council Bill two-one-one-zero dash three-eight, first reading. Adopt the proposed ordinance levying the regular property for the City of Everett for fiscal year commencing January first two thousand twenty-two on all taxable property, both real and personal, subject to taxation thereon. The third and final reading and public hearing will be held on November tenth of two thousand twenty-one. And item twelve is Council Bill two-one-one-zero dash three-nine, first reading. Adopt the proposed ordinance levying the EMS property taxes for the City of Everett for fiscal year commencing January first two thousand twenty-two on all taxable property, both real and personal, subject to taxation thereon. Third and final reading on that with the public hearing will also be on November tenth. And hi, Suzie.
Good afternoon. Um, thank you. So today. Today I'm going to start with the twenty-twenty-one property tax distribution by taxing district. And then I'll go over a sample tax calculation for an average value home in Everett, followed by information on the impact of I seven forty-seven on property tax revenue through a look at the decline in purchasing power of one property tax dollar. And then I'll finish up with the six-year forecast. So this chart shows a distribution of property taxes among the individual taxing authorities in twenty-twenty-one. For each dollar of property tax paid by a home or business owner. About two cents goes to the Regional Transit Authority. Approximately two cents goes to the Port of Everett. Five cents goes to emergency medical services or EMS. Six cents goes to Snoomish County. Nineteen cents goes to the City of Everett to fund basic services like police and fire and parks in the streets and the library. Twenty-eight cents goes to state schools and thirty-eight cents goes to the Everett School District. In total, about sixty-six percent of the average Everett levy dollar goes to support schools. So the proposed property tax ordinances include a, the one percent increase in the city's regular and EMS levies. This illustration estimates the impact of that increase on an average homeowner using numbers provided in the Snoomish County Assessor's twenty-twenty-one annual report. Although you will see a, a much larger numbers for Everett's median value on real estate websites. I'm using the assessor's numbers for this purpose because they relate directly to property tax assessments. The average residential value for twenty-twenty-one taxes, according to the report, is three hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred. If we apply the city's average assessed value increase for twenty-twenty-two taxes of five point seven percent, the value of this property grows from three hundred and eighty-two thousand in twenty-twenty-one to four hundred and four thousand for twenty-twenty-two. Because the assessed value is growing at a rate greater than one percent, the regular levy rate is reduced from a dollar eighty-four in twenty-twenty-one to a dollar seventy-seven in twenty-twenty-two. And the EMS levy is reduced from forty-five cents in twenty-twenty-one to forty-three cents in twenty-twenty-two. Looking at the bottom section of this table, you see that the net result is that even though a property owner's assessed value rises by five point seven percent, the twenty-twenty-two tax bill for regular and EMS levies only increased by thirteen dollars or roughly one and a half percent over what was paid in twenty-twenty-one. The reason why the increase is more than one percent is because there was a large refund levy in twenty-twenty-two. A refund levy represents a one-time restoration of amounts refunded to taxpayers in prior years that is spread across all taxable properties. As we've often discussed, the one percent limit on property tax poses significant challenges on the city's ability to keep pace with the rising cost of public services. This chart illustrates the diverging paths of the Consumer Price Index or CPI and the one percent limit on property taxes beginning in two thousand and one, when the one percent limit was enacted and extending out to twenty-twenty-one. Although CPI is not a perfect measure of inflation or the external forces that drive the growth in the cost of providing public services, it's relevant to our labor contracts and many of our contracts with suppliers of goods and services. Industry-specific areas that significantly exceed CPI include construction costs relating to maintaining the city's infrastructure, healthcare, and the cost of technology. If we start with one dollar at the beginning of two thousand and one as the base share and then we deflate that dollar by the difference between CPI and the one percent growth limit, the value of that dollar in terms of how much we can buy with it declines to only seventy cents by twenty-twenty-one. This chart shows the six-year forecast for the city's regular levy. The property tax ordinances that are in first reading tonight includes assumptions for implementing the annual one percent increase allowed by RCW as well as estimated additional levy amounts for new construction, annexations, and changes in state assessed properties. We estimate that the city will collect thirty-nine point six million in twenty-twenty-two in regular property taxes if council approves the ordinances as submitted. And that completes my briefing for this afternoon and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Suzie. And let's go down the roll to see if we have questions. Uh, starting with Councilmember Roberts.
Uh, thank you, Suzie. This is really great information and the graphic that you've provided is really helpful. Um, so thank you. I think the, uh, I don't have any questions at this point. Uh, but I guess the one comment is it's, it's pretty clear that uh initial seven forty-seven has set us on a trajectory that does not keep pace with uh real costs and it looks like over twenty years uh we've lost thirty percent. So I'm happy to be corrected if I'm missing that, but that's when I, that's one of my takeaways uh from this graph. So um, that's a story that needs to be told uh to the broader community and I just appreciate your bringing this forward. No questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Vogli?
My question is every year we do this, correct? We have to create this particular ordinance and I know it gets worse every year, but this this is a regular thing that happens every year at this time.
Yes, yes, we are correct. We are required to uh adopt an ordinance every year in order to levy the next year's property taxes.
So I just wanted to put that out there and also, of course, what my colleague has said and probably will continue to say throughout, oh my goodness. Do the people know what has happened and how it is affecting the um, well, until a few years ago, but now I do and it's terrible. So um, thank you for bringing us this terrible news. No, but I do appreciate all of your work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Council President Stone Cypher. Suzie, as always, I appreciate how you explain this and, and put this into the kind of terms that all of us can uh absorb and understand. And Councilmember Roberts, you're exactly right. This, this clearly shows that we've lost thirty percent in terms of real buying power over the last twenty years. Um, and really, this is the crux of what we've been talking about for many years as the structural deficit for the city. So roughly a third of our uh city operating revenues come from this, this source, i.e. property taxes. And so as, as I've said for many years, when a third of your revenues are essentially capped at one percent per year increase and inflation is running well, this year maybe as much as five or six percent from the numbers I'm seeing now out of the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Um, it's a math equation that does not work over a long period of time and, and the concerning part is that uh moving forward uh this, this gap, if you will, between the one percent and our inflation rate or CPI is increasing, at least at the moment. So I, I suspect that this problem will get worse over the next year or two before it may get better. Um, but uh, you know, appreciate how you lay this out and, and certainly will support the uh, you know, the one percent increase in as much as it, it doesn't even come close to keeping up with the real true, true inflation rate. So thanks very much, Suzie.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tui?
Uh, thanks, Council President Suzie. Thank you again for your, the way, the great way you present all of this material. Appreciate it and uh just, you know, ditto to what my colleagues have said and it's a, does create quite a challenge for our, our city. Um, anyway, thank you and I will support this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bader?
A familiar story now, having heard it for so many years. Uh, you know, I, I just off the top of my head wonder as Suzie's presentation, one that we should carve out and put it somewhere really easy to find on the website, uh, so we can refer our constituents to that uh when they ask us to explain uh, which Suzie does far better than us uh about the dilemma we're in. Other than that, that's all the input I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and I really can't add anything new to this dialogue. Um, it's what we need to do and it's in a lot of ways inadequate. Um, but this will come forward to us uh on the tenth of November and we'll see you then, Suzie.
Thank you.
Um, and then we are now going to move into our executive session, which is expected to last approximately ten minutes. And we will reconvene here and adjourn. We are not anticipating any announcement. Uh, we are back from our executive session and as noted at the start of this meeting and provided on the screen, you may contact Deb Williams in the City Council Office for instructions on watching, listening, or participating in our weekly meeting and she can be reached at four-two-five-two-five-seven-eight-seven-zero-three or by email at DWilliams@EverettWa.gov. And with no further business, we are now adjourned.
Thank you. Mics are down.